Good evening, the time is now 7:03 and I would like to call Beloit City Council Meeting Order at this time. Can we have a roll call please?
All councilors are present.
Item two, Pledge of Allegiance, may we all stand please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, Special Orders of the Day and Analysis, we have none at this time. Item four, Public Hearings, four A please.
Consideration of Ordinance Number 3634, amending the future land use map and city of Beloit comprehensive plan from two-family townhouse to mixed residential for the property located at 2426 Prairie Avenue.
Ms. Christensen.
So, the applicant has proposed the amendment which was just described, from two-family townhouse residential to mixed residential. This is an amendment to our comprehensive plan that we just adopted late last year. So currently, when the one was last updated, we had listed this property, which was a former armory site, for two-family townhouse residential, which is intended to encourage groupings of attached single-family residences with individual entries, like townhouse, rowhouse, condominiums, and duplexes. He has proposed, the applicant is proposing, a multifamily residential project of two 24-unit apartment buildings, which is not allowed by that existing classification. So he has requested this comprehensive plan amendment. This is an amendment to the future land use plan, that's future land use map, which is included in the comprehensive plan. There's still, if approved, it would still require rezoning. It's currently zoned public lands and institutions, so this is not the zoning step, this is the plan amendment step. At the Plan Commission meeting, after much discussion, they did recommend approval of the request to change the comprehensive plan, and the vote was four to three. We have received, we did receive two emailed comments after the Plan Commission meeting, but before the council meeting, and we included those in your packet, and then I think you got two more emails today, if you haven't seen them. All four of those were opposed to the multifamily, to the change to the multifamily designation. This is on your agenda tonight for a public hearing and layout.
Thank you. City Manager Luther.
Just to clarify to the individuals present this evening, and those who are viewing, staff's recommendation, when this initially came to Plan Commission, was to uphold the existing comprehensive plan to not allow the multifamily housing. Staff's position continues to be to uphold the existing land use plan and land use map and comprehensive plan, and not allow the multifamily housing. That is different than the recommendation coming forward from Plan Commission. I simply wanted to state for the record, the position that staff has taken on this topic.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open up the public hearing on item four A this evening. Anyone wishing to speak on item four A this evening, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. We did receive a lot of emails this week about this item, so what I'm going to do is ask individuals, when you come speak, to please limit your comments to at least three minutes. I will not cut you off, but I'll give you a friendly reminder when you're approaching that mark. But I also want to, at this point, also say, any tax on city staff, or councilors, or audience members, I would ask you to sit down immediately. So please, if you're willing to speak on item four A this evening, please step up, state your name and address for the record.
Carol Thorson, 2413 Prairie Avenue. My concern with this is I'm wondering why there would be a need to have that many apartments in that area. For one thing, it would be a major eyesore. Two buildings of that size with parking to accommodate that many apartments would basically take up that whole area, and would not be aesthetically nice. It would be not feasible. Plus, it would allow for a big influx of people into the area, bringing more congestion, more traffic, a lot more congestion with people, noise, possible increase in crime rate. I, I just feel that it would not be a good idea, and I would agree with the decision to leave the zoning as is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on item four A this evening, please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Ron Mothee, I live on 2447 Iva Court, which, the armory is in my backyard. I lived on Iva Court for 48 years, so it's a little concerning that they'd want to put up something this size. And, over the past few years, well maybe 48 years, has everybody known, everything has grown out that way, so traffic on Prairie Avenue is quite busy most of the time, and it's really hard to turn left on Prairie Avenue, especially when school is getting out, and the cars are all lined up along there. So there's, there's a lot of safety concerns, and we get a lot of traffic coming up Iva Court because they want to go up to the stoplight on Prairie and Elmwood, so they can make their left-hand turn to go up there. So I'm really opposed to this. I think most of the neighbors are, I know a lot of them aren't here tonight, I've talked to quite a few of them, and if this ever was to come, I think there'd be more people down here. So I, I agree with you council, as far as keeping it zoned the way that it is, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on item four A this evening? Second call, anyone else wishing to speak on item four A this evening? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Andrew Saris, I'm the current owner of the property that we're discussing. My address is 3926 West Tewee Avenue, it's a business location in Lincolnwood, Illinois.
Okay.
First, Happy New Year everybody, so I just want to address everybody. I could easily address some of these questions that the residents are concerned about, but my first question would be, is does anybody have any questions as far as where we're at at this point with this development? As far as what you have seen, or heard, or are updated with?
I think, I think this is an opportunity for, on the public hearing, it's an opportunity for individuals to come up and speak on items on the agenda.
Okay.
This is not a time where the councilors and the presenters actually go into a question and answering period. So, so what you would need to do at this time is kind of present your side, or thinking if you're there, if you're going to be the person in charge of it, because this is the only spot on the agenda where you would have that opportunity, because after I close the public hearing, then we were going to vote for the councilors to either move it forward, or not.
Okay, I definitely would like to speak now.
Okay, so go right ahead.
So, let me try to sort of get you an overall picture of what's happening. Everybody's familiar with the location, 2426 Prairie. It's been a site there forever, it seems like, it's been there for 40, 50 years, it's finally been sold, and up for development, since the village comprehensive plan has been, and we are included in that plan. Once we saw it, we decided to sort of jump on board and catch it before it gets a little bit further into where they were going to rezone everything. So, when we first initially bought the property, we were looking into doing duplexes, single-family home, or townhomes, or something in that category, because that seemed appropriate at the time. Once we bought the property, and we started getting into it a little bit deeper, we started crunching numbers, and started talking to local people, real estate agents, professionals, developers, and we found that the best possible use, which is the most common thing that's recommended for property, of course, or the best possible use, for this specific location kept on coming up as rentals and apartments. And, we weren't intentionally, or initially planning to come in to do that, that's not what our goal was, we were wanting to come in, develop, turn around, sell, and get out. Duplexes, quads, townhomes, apartments, but we ran into a huge amount of numbers as far as financial concerns, between roads, building infrastructure, price of home selling, price of building, so just general things that, you know, developers go through. And, every time we kept on looking at different angles, we kept on running into apartments, or rental situations. So, we took a fresh approach to it again, and, you know, we're looking at it from an outside point of view, this is a second, you know, set of eyes, and we consulted with Drew, and, actually Julie here, and we wanted to open up discussion about doing multifamily, because that's where it seemed to be going in that direction. So they opened it up to the council, which was approved in motion forward, and we're here at this point. And, what I wanted to really sort of emphasize was, the reason we went into multifamily is because the new ordinances, ordinance, ordinance that they're allowing, if you look at it carefully, it's single-family home, duplex, quadplex, multifamily, not multifamily, I'm sorry, row homes. Now, when you think about it, I'm from Chicago, so I, when I, when I start hearing those words, I start seeing row homes, six units maybe, eight units, 12 units, right? We went with a couple architects, we did some designs on quad, on quad units, and we laid them out on the property. And, what we find is that we would have to create a public road access to get into the property, because the property's 300 feet deep and 500 feet wide, we would need to create a public access road to get into the properties behind it. So, the cost was really forbidden. It, once you start crunching numbers, it just doesn't work. We asked the city if they could come in and build a public road, there's no way the money was there, we looked at it, we crunching numbers, there's no way you could do any kind of development, putting any roads in the back of the property. So we're constantly being faced, and constantly being pushed towards multifamily, no matter which way we looked at it, from a cost view, from doing single-family homes, or duplexes, or anything else, the cost ratio benefits just don't work out. We couldn't get any, anybody to invest in it, we couldn't do anything. So it just kept on falling back into that area. So again, we're looking at it from fresh eyes. We're coming in saying Prairie is a major thoroughway. You've got hospitals, you've got, you know, commercial in the area, you've got small businesses, quite a bit of commerce going on, and what winds up happening is, to address one of the questions, as far as traffic flow, we're looking for traffic flow. Multifamily seems to make sense. You've got small, not that, the density isn't that high on this, and if you look at the cost of the population.
I just wanted to, I wanted to just give you a little reminder here, that we're winding up on your time for speaking too.
Oh, I didn't realize how much time I had, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have three minutes, so I'll give you.
Oh, is that right? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Your ears are bleeding, I'm sure, sorry about that. So at any rate, what winds, what winds up happening is, the amount of residents that we're asking for, just to imagine, I gave you some drawings, we did some sort of renderings, we sort of put something together, it was kind of hard to get things going during the holidays here, so we had an architect and somebody do on Photoshop. The buildings that we're talking about, to address one issue with parking, these types of buildings are the same kind of buildings that they're building on Hawk Ridge area. You've got 24 units, they look like townhomes, there's parking underground, so the parking is all underground, there might be some parking above ground, behind the buildings, to create, you know, for guests, but the parking will be underground, so it's not above ground. So that addresses that issue. Traffic, Prairie's getting redesigned, there's a whole new plan for traffic flow on Prairie. You're not going to be able to get across the street from Prairie unless you hit Virginia or some of the major arteries, so as far as traffic, you're going to be flying right through that area, you won't even see what's going on over there. The other thing is, we've tried to, so what we're doing with the 24 units, why 24 or 48, because we want to have a full-time staff custodian on, on the premises to take care of the properties. What we've created, it was nice little buildings that go, two, two buildings are all we're asking for, that sit 25 foot from the streets, sort of covered roads, we have some little hills, bunks that they're going on, and the area behind it's completely open, it's completely open. We've got almost three and a half acres of land, we're only going to use about, not even a full acre for the entire building structures for everything, and you're still going to have almost three acres of land open in the back.
Okay.
So it reduces the congestion, I mean, there's a lot more I could save, but, I mean, so we've addressed all these different issues that keep coming up, I mean, we're not just throwing something, we're looking at every issue, trying to figure out what to do. And, the numbers just work out for 48. The new zoning will allow 42 units.
Okay.
So, you know, we're only asking for six extra units, so if this does not go through, we're still going to be at the same point, we'd come back and say, look, we could put 24 townhomes, which is the same thing, but more cluster, another, you know, 18 over here, and it's still more cluster, we're just trying to consolidate to make it more cost-efficient. Rather than cutting the street 42 times, we cut it two times.
Okay.
We got two sewers coming in, one water line coming in, not 40, you know what I mean? I mean, there's a bunch of stuff that's considered in development, as you probably all know, and I'm sure you have tons and tons of questions, but I didn't realize I had to talk so fast.
Okay, thank you. Third, third and final call. Anyone else wishing to speak on the public comments this evening? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ernest Calvin, I live at 2419 Prairie, direct across the street from it, and I'm opposed to it.
Okay.
Okay, so with the extra three acres, I guess he can put his road in.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, at this time, I would close the public hearing on item four A, and entertain a motion from council to lay this over.
Mr. President, may I make one informational comment? I can't.
At this time, no, I closed the public hearing, and right now, I'm just looking for entertaining a motion to lay this over to our next meeting. Second and final call, for a motion to lay this over to our next meeting. Seeing that there is no motion, item four A dies for lack of emotion. We want item five, public comments, we reached a position, a point on the agenda where citizens may come forward to speak on anything that's not on the agenda. Once again, you would be limited to three minutes, I will not cut you off, but I will give you a friendly reminder that you're approaching that mark. And then, if, once again, the same rules apply, that if you come down and do any personal attacking on council or city staff, we will ask you to sit down immediately. At this time, is there anyone wishing to speak on the public comments this evening? City Manager Luther.
Thank you. To clarify, the outcome of the action, or the lack of action that was just taken, is that the existing comprehensive plan remains, the current map remains as it is. So the council has opted not to lay over this item to the next meeting for a final vote, it has died for lack of a second, and so the existing future land use map and the existing comprehensive plan continues in its current state.
It died for lack of a motion.
Right.
So, yeah, so we just want to make sure that that was clear for the record as well. Anyone wishing to speak on the public comments this evening? Come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Ernest Calvin, 2419 Prairie, and I'm interested in, I've been to several meetings concerning the redoing of Prairie Avenue, and the island that's going to block me, and make me drive to the school where the kids are, to come home. Do you have an outcome of that?
I believe that is part of something that's on our agenda this evening, to take a little action on, but I know that there's been, this is, this is, we're looking at a different thing in front of the older school, but that plan that you're talking about, I believe they're still looking, and is dead?
Well, if I may, we don't usually have an exchange during public comment, but the design has been finalized, so all of the, the public comments have been received, and the design ultimately does still have an island. So we can have engineering speak with you, I think you've spoken to them a number of times.
Yes.
But ultimately, that was the safest design in, in the final decision-making that's already been approved by the state.
Okay. When you say safest, can I understand where the hazards were?
So this isn't really intended for that purpose, we would have to talk with you offline, public comment is for us to hear your concerns, we don't typically engage and, and go further, but staff can follow up with you again, following the meeting or another time.
Okay, after the meeting then, because I've talked to your city engineer, and I've been to your meetings, so, they know me.
We have Lori Williamson here too, so she, she could follow up with you as well, and I know we've had conversation about this same design before, so I think several of us had talked to her about it before, so I think we've, we've communicated to you our thoughts, and what we think, so if you guys can get together and just definitely talk about it, greatly appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on the public comments this evening? Third and final call, anyone wishing to speak on the public comments this evening? Seeing none, I would close that portion of the agenda, move to item six, Consent Agenda.
All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered, routine will be enacted by one motion, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member shall request, in which event the items will be removed from the General Order of Business, and considered at this point on the agenda.
Is there any council who would like anything removed from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, the Consent Agenda consists of items six A through six D, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Duncan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Blakely, any questions or comments on the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, all in favor of approval to the Consent Agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, passes seven zero. Item seven, License to seven A please.
Consideration of Resolution 2019004, approving 2017-2019 applicants for an alcohol beverage operator's bartender license, for the period of December 11th of 2018 to January 2nd, 2019. You have before you, recommendation for eight approvals, no denials.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Foreback, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Preso, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of approving item seven A, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, passes seven zero. Item eight, Ordinances, please, eight A, please.
Consideration of Ordinance Number 3635, to amend Sections 1.60, 3.15 Sub 6, 3.15 Sub 9, Sub 10, Sub 11, 1.52 Sub 2, Sub 3D, there's several here, to repeal Section 1507 Sub 1M of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit pertaining to the reorganization of the information technology, human resources, and the Public Works Department of the City of Beloit. This is first reading.
Attorney Krieger.
Good evening, we needed to do it. A number of cleanup items with relating to some reorganization that the city has conducted, information technology, or information systems, would like to be called information technology. We've also changed Park and Leisure Services to Park and Recreation, so the ordinance changes to accomplish those were completed in the ordinance before you. In addition, HR is now falling under my responsibility, so we made that change to the ordinance. In addition to that, I've located a couple other issues that were just minor housekeeping matters that I included in the ordinance as well, and so those are before you, I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
The item is on the agenda for a first reading at this time, I would like to amend this and entertain a motion to move, suspend the rules and send it to a second reading, second and final reading is, is motion by Jacobson, second by Duncan, to suspend the rules and move it to a second reading. All those in favor of that suspension, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, passes seven zero. Now to the merits of the case, is there a motion?
I assume.
Motion by Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Foreback, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, passes seven zero. Eight B, please.
Consideration of Ordinance Number 3636, to create Section 1802 Sub 16 Sub D, and to amend Sections 1802 Sub 15 Sub F of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit, authorizing outdoor vending other than alcohol for a Juneteenth celebration in Telfer Park. This is first reading.
Director Williamson, please.
Good evening, you have before you an ordinance that would allow us to amend the section to allow for the Juneteenth event to be held at Telfer Park. They pass it, it had been at Summit Park, they're anticipating larger attendance, so they want to move it to Telfer Park. As a part of this, they are also doing this in sponsorship with the YWCA of Rock County. As a part of their request, they are also asking that the city council would consider waiving the rule, excuse me, waiving the fees to have this event at Telfer Park. In addition, because they would like to start marketing this event, at an, at an event they are going to this weekend, they are asking that the council would consider waiving the rules for a second reading this evening.
Thank you. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Aye.
Motion by Foreback, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Blakely. Before we move to the vote on suspending the rules, I would just, Director Williamson, if you could give us the date of the event, and I know we have individuals here that's responsible for it, but as she's coming forward, I would like to say, this is an event that we've had several years ago, I can remember as far back as when I was a little kid, so no comments about how long that's been, but I remember activities like this growing up, and it, it really brought the community together. At that time, it was on Riverside Park, down by the river, but now, and there should be a parade and everything, so I'm glad to see that it is coming back to life for the community, because I want people to understand that this is for the entire community, not just a certain population in the community, and I'm sure that the organizers would like for everybody to get involved. I believe in, when they ask you to do something, just say yes. We are Beloiters, we all believe in what we do here, but I think this is going to be a grand event, a grand weekend, I'm sure they have a lot of things planned, I want as many people to go out and support it as possible, but this is going to be, as we continue to bring people to see what we're doing here in Beloit, this is a grand opportunity for this to happen. So I know, as I mentioned before, we have individuals here, so if you have questions, they're in the back, back there before they leave, you can ask them information, I'm sure they're going to be looking, and they can kill me later, or whatever, but I'm sure they may be looking for donations, but anything that you can give to support this event, as we do at all events in the city, because truly, that's what makes this city great, that we have people to come out and make sure that we celebrate, and we celebrate well.
The, the date is going to be on June 22nd of this year, and again, it's very exciting because by moving it to Telfer Park, it allows them an opportunity to actually grow and expand the event that you were speaking to, so staff is very excited to partner with the Juneteenth Committee, as well as with the YWCA to have this happen.
And I would like, I would also like to thank staff, because I know this actually conversation started about a year ago, well, what can we do? So that shows you the organization and the determination that they started the discussion about a year ago, and I'm just want to commend staff as saying, this is something that we believe in, and what can we do to help you support it, and so I want to commend them as well. But with that, we do have a motion and a second to suspend the rules, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, passes seven zero, now to the merits of, and I want to make sure, Director Williamson, if you could state again what they're looking for, so when we cast this vote, we know exactly what we're approving.
Yes, they are asking to have this event be allowed at Telfer Park, and also they're asking the councilors to consider waiving the fees for this, the city permit fees.
The language of the ordinance is to allow the event to happen at Telfer Park, there's a second section of the ordinance that allows the city manager to waive the fees under her authority, just to be clear about that. Okay.
Because I want to make, the reason I called that, make sure I wanted everyone to be clear, as we move down the road, June's a long way away, so when this comes up again in June, you may have different councilors sitting here, you may have the same, but just in case we get questions from the public, I want us to be clear tonight when we take a vote of what we're voting for, so there be no confusion going down the road. With that stated, to the merits, is there a motion? Motion by Anderson, and second by Duncan, any questions? Counselor Blakely.
Yes, when it comes time for Lori to consider waiving the fees, when will that take place?
So when they come forward to submit, we'll work with them, there has been, and, some past practice, where the city manager has had that authority with nonprofit groups, we wanted to clarify in the ordinance that I have your actual authority to, to enact that, but that would certainly be my full intent.
Any other questions? Seeing none, there is a motion and a second, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, passes seven zero. Move to item nine, Appointments. There are none. Item 10, Council Activities and Upcoming Events, Counselor Jacobson. Counselor Anderson.
I survived the holidays, so I have nothing else to talk about.
Counselor Blakely.
Yes, there's an upcoming event or two I want to tell you about. Wednesday evening here in the Forum, Wednesday, January 9th, the Police Department is holding a swearing-in ceremony, and badge pinning ceremony. We're bringing in four new officers to the Police Department, Isaac Ash, I may be mispronouncing their last names, but, my apologies to them, but my congratulations at the same time. Oscar Asilas, Michael Duran, and Nicole Pettit. So that takes place right here, 5:30. It's a very festive event with lots of family, congratulations going around, a formal flag guard, it's really a great event. And this Thursday evening at 6:00 PM, the NAACP will hold its first meeting of the New Year. This takes place over at 2639 Sunshine Lane, which is now the Beloit Pentecostal Assembly Church, the former McGlenigan School for longtime Beloiters. So NAACP this Thursday at 6 o'clock, and you don't have to be a current member to come and see what it's all about, it's open to everyone. Thank you, Happy New Year.
Counselor Foreback.
Happy New Year.
Counselor Preso.
Happy New Year.
Counselor Duncan.
No report, Happy New Year.
Counselor Levy, no report, move to item 11, City Manager's Presentation, there is none. Item 12, Reports From Boards and City Officers, 12A and 12B, please.
12A, as the city council may adjourn in a closed session in the city manager's conference room on the fourth floor pursuant to Section 1985 Sub 1G of Wisconsin statutes, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is, or is likely to become involved, and pursuant to 1985 Sub 1E, for the purposes of deliberating or negotiating the purchase or of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, namely to discuss negotiations and corporation proceedings, and threaten litigation with the town of Beloit. The council will not reconvene in open session on that item. 12B, the city council may adjourn in a closed session, session in the city manager's conference room on the fourth floor pursuant to Section 1985 Sub 1E of Wisconsin stats, to deliberate or negotiate the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public land.
to deliberate or negotiate the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public lands, or conducting other specified business, namely to discuss the potential purchase of twenty-two twenty-two Canterbury Drive, and the council will not reconvene into open session on that item either.
Thank you. At this time, before we call for the votes, is there anyone that needs a couple minutes before we go? Seeing none, is there a motion to go into closed session? Motion by Duncan. Is there a second? Second by Preso. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We are in closed session, and please go directly to the fourth floor conference room. Thank you.